Warm welcome to you and it's a pleasure for me to welcome you to today's experience sharing session. It is our 12th and final experience sharing session for this very first exercise for the full learning cycle. That is the exercise on situation analysis and the full learning cycle is for the movement for immunization agenda 2030. And today's express sharing session is special because we are going to be focusing on the the zero dose challenge with our colleague Ian Jones. I just want to, but before we go dive into the experience sharing on zero those challenges, I just want to make this quick reminder that we are in the final week of our exercise on situation analysis. And this week you have one goal, which is to revise, improve your situation analysis and submit the final version before 11:59 PM Friday 15th of April, Geneva time. And earlier on, I asked you this question, have you seen this email? So if you have not yet seen this email, I'd like to invite you to check your inbox because you received this mail yesterday. It is the key that you need to secure your certification for this exercise on situation analysis. So check your mail, there is the questionnaire that we've been telling you about since Monday for you to tell us more about your station analysis. And then afterwards, go to peer grade to submit the final version of your situation analysis. That said, I just want to dive straight in. So what we said, and what I said earlier on today's session is special because we'll be sharing experiences on zero dose. And I want to first of all start by thanking Dr. Cotton and Nungor Rogers that actually said because of connectivity issues, he may not be able to join today's session to share his experience, but he went ahead to send us his answers, his experience and his response to the questions by mail. So I'd like to especially recognize and thank him for that, even if he's not here, I'm sure he could get to hear the recording later on. So I'd like to hand over now to Reda, who is going to continue with the facilitation for the rest of the session. And thank you so much, Reda, for being here. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. Hello, everyone. And so very pleased to introduce to you Ian Jones, who has been supporting TGLF as our lead researcher and of course with Francois Gass, who many of you know from previous experience sharing sessions. We're conscious of the demand on your time, so rather than invite you to an additional session, we've taken this approach that you know this time is for experience sharing. So that is what we're going to be doing today, just with a very specific focus and a very specific set of questions. To explain that specific focus, I'm going to turn to Ian Jones, if Ian, you could introduce yourself and then kick us off. We have, this was a kind of preliminary list of questions, which are now gone from Charlotte's screen. And yeah, and so we, you, we may not, you know, we'll be turning to those of you in the room. Some of you are coming because you're joining experience sessions in general, but some of you have received a specific invitation to contribute to a case study on immunization agenda, focusing on zero dose challenges. Ian, could you introduce yourself and explain what is the purpose? What are you hoping that we can, participants in the room, members of the movement for IA 2030 can contribute to today? And what happens after today's session?
Thank you very much, Reda. I'll try and do that briefly. So my background is, I've been working with the WHO headquarters in Geneva on the predecessor to IA 2030 and the development of IA 2030. And more recently with TGLF on IA 2030 related projects. And one of the aims of IA 2030 is to is to ensure there's good dialogue between people working at the country level on the practical challenges of immunization and people working at the global level and developing policy and guidance and support. And the TGLF activities are one way which we hope to strengthen those connections between global level people and people working in countries at different levels. Obviously, zero dose and under immunized populations are of great interest at the global level and are an important feature of the IA 2030 strategy. And people applying to join the IA 2030 movement provided a little bit of background on their zero dose related challenges and how they have, how they are being addressed. And what we hope through this questionnaire is just to dig into that into a little bit more detail to find out which particular populations you think are particularly affected or under immunized, have large numbers of zero dose children. And the reasons why you think these populations are under immunized, what you've done to understand better the reasons behind that and how you're going about trying to improve coverage amongst these populations. It's also an opportunity for you to reflect on your experiences so far. What you think went well, what you thought went not so well, what would have made things easier for you. And this is a chance for you also to make any comments you want to people working at the global level so that they can hear firsthand from, from people who are working with these communities and the challenges they faced and what would make their responses more, more effective. So we're extremely grateful if you could spend a little bit of time completing the questionnaire. It should only take about 10 or 15 minutes. And we'll sort of collate all the responses we get and do some analysis on that. And we'll be working with the, with a particular working group, IA 2030 working group on coverage and equity to, to analyze those responses. We, we may produce some specific case studies if we think there are particular examples that illustrate key points, key points well, and we may follow up with particular individuals if we want to clarify matters or look at things in more, in more depth. But, but we really appreciate your, your, your efforts here. It can give us more insight into what's going on and I think help us, those of us working at a global level to, to, to understand the challenges better and to understand better how, how they're being addressed and how we can help you achieve your objectives. So that, that, that link to that questionnaire should be coming out soon. I think if you, if you don't receive a link and you're interested in contributing, then do please contact us and we can send out a link to the questionnaire as well. But I believe that that link should be coming out fairly soon. I'm sure Reda will be able to confirm that. And again, very much appreciate your, your efforts in this and look forward to hearing the conversations today. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ian. And just to clarify, for those of you who are joining the usual experience session, so this is the invitation that went out to those of you who had shared an experience. So this is the message, for example, for Kingsley from Ghana with reaching zero dose communities, so a specific invitation. And Kingsley, in his initial application, gave us two lines, what he shared about zero dose was one-on-one and house-to-house approach was adopted during, using ANC, PNC and weighing cards for identification of the zero dose children, follow-up is also conducted to make sure that they were immunized. So Kingsley, it so happens, is not in the room. Obviously, not everyone is, is able to, to join at this time, which is why even if you're not able, you're watching the recording or you've just received the email and it's pointed you to the recording. These, this is actually the initial set of questions. I, my sense is, so the final questionnaire will be more, you know, will be slightly different, but this is what we want to get at. I think it's certainly good enough for that purpose. And so we're going to kick off. We, we're already almost 10 minutes in and we haven't heard from you yet. And the whole point of a session like this is indeed to, to hear from you. All right. So I haven't, yeah, thanks, Charlotte. I can actually share the, the video from, from, from my screen, I think, yeah, like this. So let's kick off. We have Burema Kabore, Burema. So we are looking, you, you can either, we can start with the 12 questions, but I suggest Ian Jones that you rudely interrupt Burema and then Francois that you do the same in order to ask the follow-up questions, to the clarifying, the clarifying questions, so that we can get into the details of the zero dose, of your zero dose work, Burema, the details that are significant, the details that will help us understand the story and make your experience more than a vague, generic contribution, but something that's specifically useful. So this is what Francois does twice a week, you know, since the beginning of the movement. Burema, over to you. I hope that, of course, that the connection will be with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reda. Thank you very much, Dr. Francois Gass. And thank you very much, Dr. Yan. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, I'm Burema Kabore. I'm from, I'm connected from Madugogo in Burkina Faso. First of all, I want to introduce myself, meaning that I have more than 15 years of experience in Burkina Faso, working at Ministry of Health as API manager at district and regional level. But since 2012, I'm working at NGO level in Burkina Faso, supporting health workers in health promotion and to fight against HIV and tuberculosis. And thanks to the Geneva Learning Foundation, I, I, I get, I get in, I keep in touch with the immunization program in Burkina Faso and also collaborating with colleagues, peers from many other countries. Okay, now let me talk about my, my project and, and challenge now. First of, first of all, I would say that the immunization program is in Burkina Faso were launched in 201980, about 1980 because it is like this. And the performance gets increasingly up to 90% of coverage in DPT3 in 2010. But in 2000 to 2016, the performance stayed, remained the same, about 19%, of DPT3. Okay, but since 2000, Burkina Faso is facing security issues. And regarding the situation, I think that as some, some area health workers are enabled to go there to vaccinate, I think that, that is a risk. There is a risk for zero dose and under immunized, immunized children in this area. And that leads me to make an analysis of the situation based on the handbook, what we call in Burkina Faso a statistic, a statistic of the Ministry of La Fente. That is a handbook produced each year. And this, and that this document encompasses data from all programs. So when I make, when I make the situation, when we look at data from national level, there is no, there is, there is no problem, there is no problem, I would say, obviously. Because the DPT3 one is about 100 and DPT1, 100, DPT3 is about 99% of coverage. So according to that, someone could say that there is no problem. But when we enter at regional and district level, we found that there is some, there is some problem. When you take an example, at national level, the DPT1 is about 100%. And at a region, the SAIL, the DPT1 is about 67. So you can, when you, when you compare the, the region from, from Book de Monde, from region SAIL and the national level, we can see that there is a gap there. So from 100 to 67% of coverage, I think that there is something, something, something wrong. And when we, when we, when we go at district level, considering the district of Jibo, which is one of the place, the security issues is very important. The coverage is about 34%, that is DPT1. When, when you consider the DPT3, at regional level, it is 51%. And at district, district level, it is 22%. When we, when we have, when we have to interpret that data, we said that at national level, considering, considering data, there is no under, under or no of zero dose there. But when you consider at regional level, we will say that at region, region of SAIL, there is 33% of zero, of zero dose in the, in the region. And at district level, it is 67% of, and the one, one year, one year children facing under vaccination. And that is, that is, that is why I, I, I try to focus my, 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 my challenge as I'm working at, 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 at district level. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm, I'm working at, with, with community workers and seeing what humanitarian is doing, are doing. And I, I analyze, analyze every data from many, many support, many reports. And I think that there is really problem in the region of SAIL and more globally in the region where there is security issues. I also use resources provided by the Global Fund to analyze the situation. I also use the, the GAVI, the GAVI tools to analyze zero dose, to have, to have a zero dose marking in the, in the experience, in, in the field. I also use my experience on the field and to, to make sure that there is some challenge on the, on the field. And there is also something to do as we have humanitarian, we have also need to have workers.
I'm going to stop you here for two reasons. One, so that Ian Jones and Francois Gass can ask you any follow-up or clarification questions and also to urge you to be concise, because there is a number of people that we'd like to hear from today. And, and so I didn't specify a time limit for each, for each presenter, but please be mindful of your colleagues so that they have adequate time to, to present as well. But Ian Jones and Francois Gass, do you have follow-up or clarify, clarifying questions on the, on the situation? The, you have said this, yes, the situation described by Burema?
Ian? Thank you very much. So in your analysis, did you, did you identify the critical problems that, that is underlying the, the the, the lower rates of coverage that you, that you saw? You, I mean, you talk about the insecurity, but are there specific consequences of that that you identified as the sort of underlying causes? Is it, is it displacement? Is it that facilities have been attacked? What, what, if you drill beneath, just saying it's due to insecurity, what are the specific issues that you think are, are the problem here?
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Yan. Yes, definitely, there is, there is a displacement of population, what we call internally displacement, displaced population. But there are also many people stay in, stay at home, but health workers can reach them as they are, they are, they are feared to be attacked by, by terrorists. So they can't, they can't, they can't go there. And that, that is, that is why humanitarian, humanitarian are working to deliver health, health, health services there. But health workers working at the Ministry of Health, I mean that working at health, health facilities, fears to go, fear to go, to go there because of risk to be attacked. And that is, that is, that is, that is the challenge and how to, to, to continue delivering health services to those populations stay in, in, in place.
Thank you, Burema. So for Ian Jones, we have a choice to make. We can keep discussing and exploring Burema's specific story or ask another presenter and follow up with Burema through the questionnaire and, and individually. That's really up to you. There's obviously a number of people in the room who've responded to the call. We did not expect this many to join. We thought there'd be around 20. So very pleased to see this, but it also makes it more, perhaps more difficult. We'd like to hear perhaps more voices, but Ian Jones or Francois, if you have specific questions for Burema?
Just, just one comment, that Burkina Faso is a very high performing API program. I had the chance to visit it, to go into the most remote area. It's a remarkable program in many, many respects. So basically, the problem is really is a security issue and which facing many countries and when you have insecurity, you don't deliver services and people don't use for fear. So this is a very specific problem that will lead to zero dose, but very peculiar to a peculiar situation that Burema has identified with his, with his experience. He knows how to review data, make the data talk, to identify this area, goes there and check what he can do in this area when you are in security. So it's, it's a critical issue for zero dose. So it's one example. Thank you, Burema.
Thank you, Dr. Francois Gass. Thank you, Dr. Yan, for questions and suggestions. I will keep in touch in order to have a suggestion and a recommendation to improve my work.
I think, Reda, from my point of view, I think that that's absolutely fascinating story you have to tell. It would be great to follow it up through the questionnaire and then perhaps afterwards as well. And as Francois says, it's a critical issue for zero dose, but it would be great to hear some additional voices. So thank you very much, Burema, and really appreciate it if you could complete the questionnaire and then we can take it up from there as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's now go to, so we have Akello Rebecca and Dr. Imran Khan with Hans Race. So let's go to Rebecca and then to, to Dr. Khan. So Rebecca, I and again, I'll post it, I'll share the first, the first six questions again. Please keep in mind, at this stage, if you can give us a high level of, you know, kind of quick overview or summary, knowing that you will be able to tell us more the details of your story in the, in the questionnaire and in the follow-up. But Rebecca, the floor is yours. Please remind us who you are, introduce yourself and then share your summary of what, you know, of your zero dose challenge and what you've been able to do about it.
Okay, thank you. Am I loud?
Loud and clear, yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Rebecca Akello. I'm speaking from Uganda. I work as a public health nurse and I handle immunizations on daily basis, including weekends. Or about zero doses, the zero dose or the under immunized. I would say that in my catchment area, it's not a lot because here we, we have actually, our areas that used to be hard to reach areas are now accessible. It was only during the COVID time, when the country was under lockdown, that we're not able to reach all the areas and our clients were really in places where there was no way to, to get into them since transportation was not allowed in the country. The people also who, who normally face those under, under immunized populations are these that deliver from home, but the number has actually gone down, it's now minimal. And we do follow up. When you, when you, when the VHT is the village health team informs us that there are some mothers that delivered at home in my catchment area, we quickly do the follow-up within the seven days so that we don't miss giving those children the BCG. Some of the activities we've done to, to, to do away with the zero dose is, one of them is the outreachers. We conduct eight outreachers monthly. Every month we have scheduled outreachers in different corners of our catchment population. We do have registers with our village health teams that have the child, the, all the children that are born in that village, it is always updated. So we are able to know who among these children have come for immunization in the facility and how many have not come. Then we do the follow-up. We are using comparison of the birth in the health facility and then the register, the child health register, to see whether all our children that were birthed in the facility have really gotten the vaccine before they are discharged home. And that's why we even vaccinate them during the weekend. At least we have to give BCG over the weekend. So with doing that, we, we, we've really cut down any aspect of having any zero doses that are missed. Then follow-up of home deliveries, I've already told you about it. Then tracking the, we, we are using tracking forms, the default stroke missed opportunity tracking forms. And this is designed in a way that we, we get to know the, 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 the parent's name, then the date of birth of that child and then the, 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 the location, the address. And finally, who is the VHT around that area? So that when we generate the list from the birth register, we compare with the list of the immunization register, we realize, when we realize that this child did not pass through us or was actually not reflected in our register, we put that child under the tracking form. And then we, we, we share the tracking form with the VHT of that area so that is able to track those children. That is, those are some of the activities we've done to, to, to minimize the missed opportunity or the under, under immunized populations.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Quick follow-up clarification questions from Francois and Ian Jones.
Rebecca, thank you. You're doing a perfect job. It's impressive what you do in your health facility. And I wish everyone was able or doing what you do because then zero dose would not be a problem. That's my perception. Can you clarify, what's your coverage? What's the reported coverage and what is the size of the number of zero dose you are targeting from your information system?
Okay, currently the coverage is at 92%.
For Penta 1 or Penta 3?
Penta 3.
And for Penta 1? And for Penta 1?
Penta 1 is at around 79.
No, it's possible. It's the opposite, no? Penta 1 has to be higher than Penta 3?
Yes, because, you know, you know, during the lockdown, some of our clients were not with us and some people shifted to different And some people shifted to different places. Since this was a town area, they preferred being in the villages, you know, because of fear of COVID infection. So after the lockdown, many of them actually came back. They relocated to towns. But we are able to track their immunization status because they come with their child health cards. And that's why our Penta 1 was lower and the Penta 3 was higher.
Okay, it means the displaced population during the lockdown make them get immunized somewhere else and coming back for Penta 3 in the area where they usually live. Am I correct?
Pardon?
I think during the lockdown, they may have displaced themselves and got the first dose of Penta somewhere else. And then they came back in their area where they usually live and get Penta 3. So you have more Penta 3 than Penta 1. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, you're correct.
I'm correct. Now, before the pandemic, did you have this such a problem? Or it's just been created by the pandemic?
No, we didn't have that problem. The problem came enough when the pandemic came in, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Previously, it was very okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. Ian Jones, questions for Rebecca at this stage?
Thank you, Rebecca. That's echo François's comments, very impressive. Two questions, if I may. One, you seem to have a very impressive supply side system in place. Have you experienced any hesitancy in your communities that would affect your coverage? And the second question is, you talked about your tracking systems. And I wondered if they were, if these are sort of electronic systems or whether you were sort of working on paper based systems and how efficient you felt those systems were. So those are my two questions, if you would mind answering those.
Oh, thank you, Ian. With vaccine hesitancy, we actually, we don't have them. Previously, there were some religious sectors that were actually exercising that hesitancy. But when the government came in with enforcement from the police, the political arm, that hesitancy is now actually at zero. Apart from the COVID vaccine, that's where the hesitancy is. But for routine immunization from zero to five years, that one, there is no hesitancy. It's actually at 0%. Then you've talked, you were asking me about the tracking form. Yes, a Minister of Health developed, in conjunction with a partner, that is Chai, Clinton Health Initiative, developed a tracking tool that was shared with all health facilities in Komi. And they gave us a copy that we could use because previously we used to just improvise paper. So that before we go for an outreach, we look into our register, which children come from the area where we are going to and have missed. They've defaulted, they've not come for their doses. So we generate the list and then we would go. But the template was not really, it wasn't available by then. We're just improvising paperwork. So when they came and they saw what we're doing, they actually brought us a template that made our work easy. We are doing, so far, it's not on a soft copy, but we are doing hard and then we file. We do filing of the hard copies because we photocopy the templates. We go to the field, share with the VHTs and then we come, update the register according to those that we've been able to track. So it is on a hard copy, not on a soft copy.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but it can be shared, they can actually share. Snap a copy and then share with you if you want to see it, how it looks like.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. So I have, so I'm showing, these are the sort of preliminary questions we shared with you to help you think through, you know, think through your story to share a quick summary today. But then the next step will be for you, Rebecca, to get, to receive the questionnaire. And I know you're probably also completing the questionnaire for the situation analysis. So do not confuse the two. And I definitely want to encourage you to take the time then to share your responses so we can get the full story. Next is Dr. Imran Khan. Dr. Imran Khan, yes, the floor is yours. You have the questions, I believe. And again, what we need in this special session is a concise summary so that François and François Gas and Ian Jones can then ask any follow up or clarification questions. And again, to encourage you to take the time to then share the full story through the questionnaire and the follow up after that. Over to you.
Sir, my name is Dr. Imran Khan. I'm working in Pakistan, in southern district. And I am divisional officer from the BHO side. Sir, looking into your questionnaire, first I want to describe my zero dose. Here, we teach to our pool team that's what's the zero dose. So those children who fail to receive any routine vaccination, so we call them a zero dose. That means that any child who didn't receive any type of vaccine after routine immunization. In our pool team, we teach each and every one, a pool worker that will go to the community during the community with the pool drops you have to ask from the household, is there any new born child in your home or not? Next question of the pool worker from the house is, is your child receive routine immunization or not? Through this process and procedure, we tracing the zero dose children and the missed community. So the pool worker note their name, their parents' name and also their address and mobile number. When they come back to the health facility for evening meeting, then evening meeting, the council medical officer receive all the zero dose list from the pool worker and hand over to the concerned EPI center for kalp person. So this is the tracing mechanism that how we trace zero dose in our community through the pool worker teams. Next thing is, sir, that the zero dose is important for me because when I register, when we register the zero dose children from community, these children move from zero dose to full immunization. Zero dose particularly important because those who are reached with the first vaccine, I likely to also receive remaining vaccine. Because when the EPI center, fukal person, receive the zero dose list from the pool worker, then he started to return these missed or zero dose children on their routine register. So in each and every EPI center, we have a permanent registration for EPI technician that they must have to register the child when, for the first time, they come to the health facility for routine immunization. Other than this, when a pool worker read a list of the zero dose or missed community to EPI technician, then he must have to register these list in their permanent register, village wise or mahalla wise. So after that, the EPI technician conduct outreach session in the community and reaching the children means reaching the missed community are part of it. Sir, third question from your side is what sources guidance did you use to identify states? So we are using a red and red approach. Each year, in our country, each year, in the first month of each year, we prepare a red dragon and we are doing refresher training to the EPI technician. During this refresher training, they prepare their red dragon micro plan. So, sir, what I observed during my community, as a community worker, a field worker, first thing is to depend upon the country to country. But my recommendation is to strengthen primary healthcare system is the first thing. Second thing is to build demand among the community. Most of the community in our area is refusal to the routine immunization also to the pool. In the form of the demand refusal or in the form of the silent refusal. Third thing is, if you want to generate demand in the community, we have to conduct educacy, communication and social mobilization. Unfortunately, in our country, in routine immunization, we don't have any type of incentives or any type of budget for the educacy, communication and social mobilization activities. Third thing is, if we started assessing activities, what I explained in my situation analysis, so we have to sustain the community demand. To sustain the community demand is very important. It will become from the religious leader. During educacy, communication and social mobilization, we have to engage, we have to engage the religious leader and they will give a speech during the jumma period and the community demand will be sustained for future for our world. Fourth thing is, we have to addressing the gender period. Because in our culture here in Pakistan, the male person can't go to the community, which are very relating to the male person who's there and vaccinate their children when female are in their house. So we also have a gender period. People here in a community give more preference to the male other than female. Even the male child they brought to the health facility for routine immunization but didn't see it. Sir, third thing is that if through the red and red approach, we reach each and every community. We knock each and every community, but the missed community which we identified is because of the refusal. And it's a very hard for us. We identified that we have to arrange the religious leader. It will be a big source for us to cover these. Sir, we take a step during the MR campaign that was born in November 2021. Before the MIZAL RUBELA campaign, we have a very best mechanism for the educacy, communication and social mobilization activity. I think you people have read our third party validation that we achieve 95% courage in hard to reach community and refusal community. It all was because of the educacy, communication and social mobilization. But unfortunately, because of the COVID, the people last believe on the healthcare system. Did the people, the healthcare worker or EPI technician are giving COVID vaccine instead of routine immunization? So because of this, the courage is our community become low day by day. One reason is that, third reason is that we are more focusing on the routine immunization. So the people of our community is extremely poor. Poor household suffering from multiple deprivation like lack of access to the reproductive health services, lack of safe drinking water and sanitation. So when we go here and we want to talk to the community and engage them to go for the routine immunization, they become demand refusal. And they say that our child is, sir, are you listening to me?
Yes.
Sir, Reda, are you listening to me?
Yes, Dr. Khan, you faded out briefly. I also have to ask you to conclude. As there are many other presenters, please try to be concise. If there are follow up questions, we'll go to Ian Jones and François Gas for those. So please conclude.
Okay, sir. I want to answer my question number six, that you need to secure additional resources for this activity. We don't have any type of resources for these activities, social mobilization activity. Because in our culture, we give invitation to some people to come to the health facility and we want to talk to them. So in our culture, it's the culture that we also have to give them a refreshment in the form of tea and the form of food. So other than this, we have to print, inflate or other things. So we don't have a secure fund. We also need a secure fund for these things. So over from my side, if there is any question for me, sir, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Ian Jones and François Gas. I'm going to turn to you for follow up or clarification questions. I'd also like to suggest, given that there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 people with hands raised, that if Ian and François, you are able to stay longer, that we extend beyond the lot of time in order to hear from more individuals. Over to you, first Ian and then François.
Thank you, Reda. Happy to say another interesting story, interesting, I think, the role of the polio teams. And again, that's come up in a couple of stories that people have said. I have one question that you highlighted hesitancy or demand factors as being an important contributory factor to low coverage. I wonder what activities you carried out to understand the reasons behind that and whether that informed your sort of social mobilization and communication activities and why you felt particularly that the sort of working with religious leaders was the approach to take. It'd be interesting to hear a bit more about that. Thank you.
And before you respond, let's go to François and get his question.
Thank you for this presentation, interesting one. Where you, I think I noted two things. First, that you use a polio team which goes house by house to identify the zero dose and refer them. And the second thing I've noted is that, and you have stressed, is that during the campaign for measles, rubella vaccine, you did very well because you had the communication, there was incentive, all the logistics were there. My question is that what is the situation of your service delivery in your area in terms of outreach? Do they visit all those hard to reach villages routinely through outreach? Or for what reason don't they do it? Do you know the situation in routine? Are those village hard to reach, never reach for all sorts of reasons? Maybe you have some reasons. Those are my questions.
Thank you both. So if Dr. Khan, you're able to provide short, concise answers, we'll take them now. Otherwise, I suggest you follow up and type your responses in the chat. All right, thanks. So I suggest you respond to that in the chat so we can go to our next presenter. So I actually made a list because there's actually no easy way to see when. We would like to do first come, first served. But we also apply our own gender and country rules so that if a man has spoken, it should be a woman afterward. And if it's someone from one country, it should be somebody from another country. So I'd like now to go to Isha Goyal. Isha Goyal. Yes, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everybody. Am I audible?
Loud and clear.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity. I will give a brief summary of the situation in India. First of all, I would like to introduce myself. I work as surveillance medical officer for WHO and I work at district level. So in my district, the zero dose or under immunized population are the people who are less aware about the importance of vaccination and those who are having some myths about the vaccination, like the vaccine will lead to sterility or vaccine is not good for children. And without vaccine, there will be no disease which will occur in their children because they have become adults themselves without any disease and without taking any vaccine. So they think that there is no benefit in taking the vaccine. And second question is to understand and identify the areas with low immunization. As in my job profile, there is a system of monitoring of the outreach services which is provided by the government. So me and my team do house to house visit in the random areas. Here, I want to mention a brief structure of my country. The country, India, is divided into several states. Then states is divided into districts. Districts is divided into blocks and blocks into villages. So I work at district level, so under me, there are several blocks and blocks are further divided into villages. So in a month, we generally do house to house visit of 120 villages and collect the immunization data of their children of that villages with the help of the health cards which is given to children. And by the emphasis of data, we came to know about the poor coverage areas which is having the zero dose children or under immunized children. And by this way, we try to cover every And by this way, we try to cover every village in a quarter of year. So that we have broad picture of every block that which block is better performing and which block is poor performing. Uh, and being working at district level, I have not done a formal root cause analysis at the village level. But at district level, I have done the analysis and we generally take the steps in general, which will apply to the whole district. But now I realize while doing this situation analysis in this IA twenty thirty, the working group, that it's now time to go more specific at the grassroots level, that is the village specific reason and action. Because since two thousand seventeen, we are taking the district level action. Like in India, we have a program which is called as intensified mission in Rithanush. And it is done in my district also. It is a seven day activity in which we especially plan out free sessions for the low coverage areas of performing areas like hard to reach areas and those having communities who do not create demand for the vaccination. So for those areas only, we have this seven day long activity in which outreach sessions are planned, in which government staff is there and partner agencies are also involved. And if required for communication purposes for I E C, the administration staff of government like district magistrates are also involved to create the demand. There is no logistics issue in my country as well as in my district. The vaccines, logistics, everything is provided by the government. Only thing is the demand creation and the motivation of the health workers. Because for applying this, uh, implementation of this intensified mission in Rithanush activity, we generally do a field survey before starting the activity in which the field level workers go house to house to enumerate all the children under the age of two years who are due for any vaccine. But some health workers are very good at their work, they track complete, they track all the children and do very good work. But some health workers are not so good and some children are left out from tracking. And that is why their vaccine is also incomplete, their vaccination is incomplete. So the obstacle which I face in my district is a good quality survey and motivation of the health workers to work in those areas who have less demand. They are also embedded in the routine, but not hundred percent. So intensification is done time to time. And as I mentioned previously also, we are doing this intensification since two thousand seventeen. So currently or also we are doing, two rounds have been done in April, March and April, and third round is also planned in May. Uh, and the last question, that is my message for global partners is to arrange some funds for the health workers so that we can reward them and motivate them to and share the practices of the good health workers so that they can also be recognized and have some motivation to do better work like other health workers. Thank you from my side.
Thank you very much, Isha Goyal. And I suggest the same system if Francois and Ian, you want to follow up. And then we'll ask Isha, Isha Goyal, if you could share your responses to their questions in the chat. We'll be saving the chat log and sharing that as well. Let's hear this time first from Francois and then Ian.
Uh, thank you, Isha, for, for sharing this experience. And I'm glad to, to see how in practice you're doing your analysis and identifying those blocks, village where you have a low routine and you have been very specific on how you do that. What can you confirm that in fact, in practical terms, you have all the needed resources and you can execute outreach, providing access to all the village? And it's purely a problem of demand identification of the hesitant or the refusals going house by house. But otherwise, there is access of in all your block and villages, there is access, regular access to immunization services. So your special outreach are just to correct a minimal problem, I suppose. That's my question.
Um, yes, sir. I will answer this in the chat box suggested by Dr. Reda.
All right. Thank you, Isha. Unless you can give a one, you know, one, one phrase or one sentence answer now.
Okay, sir. Uh, the outreach session is not a problem in my district. Uh, in my district, there is a practice of doing outreach sessions on every Wednesday and Saturday. So every village of the district is covered by making a meticulous plan for all the health workers for Wednesdays and Saturdays. And if they are not completed on these two days, then Monday and Tuesday is also taken into account. Uh, the main problem is the motivation, that is the demand creation. And second is the motivation of a bunch of health workers who are not tracking in a good way.
So my next question was what proportion of zero dose are you able to recover with your approach? Is it five percent in your district? Is it ten percent? Is it two percent?
Uh, so BCG, the coverage of BCG in my district is ninety eight percent. But when we go to the M C V one, then it remains eighty nine percent. That is a dropout of nine percent at the district level.
Thank you.
All right, Ian Jones.
Uh, thank you. Another, another interesting story. And I think India is an interesting, um, e- example of, of progress that can be made when there's, there's commitment to improve coverage. Uh, I, I have a, a sort of general question, which is, um, uh, India has launched these specific initiatives. I, I would be interested in your thoughts on whether this is sustainable over the, the, the long term. Uh, are, are the activities you're doing something that can continue in the foreseeable future? Or are they things that are, uh, just in a sense, one offs due, due to this, um, current emphasis on, on increasing, um, coverage levels? Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. So Isha, I suggest you answer that one in the chat. And of course, in the full questionnaire, you'll be able to, 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 to provide more detailed, more details as well as in the, the follow up that will come after the questionnaire. So next is Penina. Let me see is if, um, yes. Uh, so I'm asking you to unmute, uh, Penina Oket. You know the
Good afternoon.
Yes, don't, don't forget to introduce yourself and, and please give us a summary, what seems important to you? You've seen the questions, uh, so we understand, so we can begin to understand your zero dose challenge and what you've done about it.
Okay, my, my, I'm sharing my experience. My name is Penina Oket from Kenya. Uh, this experience is based on a sample of facilities. And it is also based on the categorization of facilities or counties, which is equivalent to province that had highest number of unimmunized children and zero dose children. So I'll go straight to part B of the question, why do you think these populations are under immunized? So based on my experience and experience and where I, I, I did this was that most of these communities were living far from the facilities. Most of those mothers again were not attending the prenatal clinic. And there were cases of home delivery. And there were places where the terrain was really bad and so they couldn't access the health facility. And also the health workers couldn't access the, the population with vaccination. And then there were also weak facility, community linkage. The community, uh, health workers and the, and the health workers and the health workers at the health facilities were not interacting much. Same to the under immunized. And how we managed to identify them was during campaigns, outreaches, uh, doing default tracing. And any child who fell ill, critically ill and needed the attention of the health worker, then for health workers who are trained in integrated management of childhood illnesses would insist that they want to know the vaccination status of the child. Then they would realize that this child has either never received any vaccine or is under immunized. And then the activities that we carried out to understand low level immunization included the performance review, uh, microplanning and categorization of facilities and monthly desk review of immunization data and looking at the weekly vaccine consumption data of every facility and also community meetings. Some of the resources that were really handy in this was the use of the E P I microplanning tool and also the immunization monitor chart, which was able to show the dropout rates. And this could give us a pointer to where so many children are hiding or are not coming for vaccination. The other thing was the monitoring the target per facility versus the achievement, what they were able to achieve versus the target. And also the immunization table, there's a table that shows coverage of each antigen, not specifically what is in the immunization monitor chart. And this was really a key for us to know whether, like for example, an antigen like BCG, how many are actually accessing BCG, the number of deliveries that are in that catchment area. And the last resource was the immunization register. So, um, to read the zero dose, there are a lot of, uh, uh, were, um, strategies that were put in place. But I'll just mention two and then I'll share the rest of, of my, um, document to it via mail. But one that was key was that they, we need, we did household registration of all expectant mothers. And then we also implemented the E P I microplan and ensuring that all the five components were actually implemented and ensured that each health worker knew, uh, in the immunization site, knew where their catchment area starts and where it ends and the number of villages that are there and the households that are there, so that they can be able to track every child who is due for vaccination. Um, the other thing that was done is that all children who are sick in one way or the other had to be screened for their immunization status and also the use of clinic cohorts. So that these mothers who come to the clinic together, they, they are put in groups so that they can be reminding each other to come so that in the next clinic visit, they don't miss the, um, the clinic. So the additional resources that I may have required and most of them were from the relevant ministries in that area. But we relied on the rumor tracking logs for infant care and myths and misconceptions about vaccines. And this really helped us to know how to deal with that community. Um, looking at the impact for, 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 for that specifically is the fact that the, the, the health worker at the immunization site knew the catchment area. This was really, really important because now they knew through the register, where are these children hiding? Where are these children, uh, the, have they, which villages are really not accessing this facility for some of the services? And this was actually measured, the impact was measured through review of routine health information system data and even the updated immunization registers for the under immunized children. Some of the obstacles that were there were some of the cultural practices surrounding newborn care. Um, distance and ignorance and vastness of some of the areas that we were working in. And the enablers were the existing immunization system. And now that the staff had also been mentored on what they are supposed to do to account for every child in their catchment area. I would say that these activities are sustainable and they do not require much resources because they're embedded in the routine immunization practice. The other thing is if we would have engaged most stakeholders and collaborated or had behavior change communication packages, then this would have helped us to achieve more success. Some of the resources and guideline used were the, like the E P I mentorship guidelines, uh, which we were supported through the national government and the microplanning tool, the reach every child microplanning tool. Uh, to the global partners, for me with that experience, uh, my message is if they can support implementation of the REC microplan, I think then we are going to reach all the zero dose children and the children were under immunized. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Penina Oket. Questions from Francois and then Ian. And then we'll hear our next speaker, Martin Mayen.
Ian, who is first? Okay. Thank you very much for this presentation and you're really a great manager in that, in where you work in the district. And I was, you know, from initially you said that one of the, the, the main problems, the geolocalization zero dose was an issue of outreach. Uh, and there was distance, terrain, et cetera. My first question say, was those identified before your citation analysis? Uh, were you not able to go there with outreach because you had not enough resources? What was the real challenge to have routinely outreach is those hard to reach, difficult to reach for mothers? That was first thing. My second point that attracted my attention is the identification of ex, of a pregnant woman in every village, which may be a breakthrough idea, starting from the pregnant woman to make sure we get the zero dose. And I would love it, you can develop that approach. Did you, when she's identified, do you have expected time of delivery and you follow up on the child? I would love you to maybe more specific, if you fill the questionnaire, on how do you use expectant mother by village, we identify them and how they get listed? And how can you trace the child going and delivery? So that would be extremely important lessons to share. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francois. So again, the suggestion is to respond in the chat. Uh, over to you, Ian Jones.
Thank you. And again, another very, very impressive story and a couple of things struck me. As well as the points Francois's made, particularly I think this illustrates the power of data. Um, to be able to, um, develop accountability mechanisms and, um, uh, really holding, holding facility managers accountable for, uh, reaching, um, uh, reaching that, 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 that target communities. And, um, uh, uh, you know, being held, held accountable, but, but also being helped to, to, to do that through the, to the schemes you, you mentioned. And I, I guess I would be interested to know if you had any issues in the quality of data that you're receiving, that, 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 um, that sort of enable you to, to do that monitoring? Uh, or whether that's, that's, you're happy with all that? Um, and I guess also it would be interesting to know about, um, how your facility managers um, have, uh, have, have responded and how you've gone about, um, um, in, involving them and, and making sure that they are equally committed as, as you are uh, to, um, to, to, to improving the, the coverage. But overall, again, I thought, I think that very impressive, uh, very impressive story. And I think that again, it sounds like there's lots to learn from, from what you've been doing. So thank you for sharing.
Uh, thank you, Ian and Francois and Penina. Let's go to Martin Mayen now. Uh, Martin, are you able to? Yes. All right.
Uh, thank you, Torida.
Don't forget to introduce yourself. Tell us who you are.
The rest of the colleagues. Yeah, thank you. Let me start by saying, uh, happy Christmas. And Madam Kriim, to all our colleagues, first of Sudan. I work in the National Ministry of Health, the strategic leadership for the Ministry of Health for both states and national level. I mean, uh, some, some national level. And all this goes to data and, uh, monitoring and, uh, things to do with improving the
Martin, I'm sorry, you, you're breaking up at least some of the time. Is there a way you can get a better connection, move closer to the wifi or get, uh, or is there anything that you can do?
Those, I think, uh, okay, I, I can hear a bit better now.
Let's, let's give it one more try, but otherwise I, I will ask you to, to share your, your, your story in the chat.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, let me, are you hearing me? I hope you're hearing me well.
Now, now I'm hearing you. Let's, let's give it another try. I think there's also a delay between when we speak and when, when you hear us, but let's, let's try again.
Okay, I'm hearing better.
Yes.
I'm not sure if I'm improving. Okay, uh, can I talk?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, okay. I wanted to say that this, uh, issue of, uh, zero doses and Miss Community started long ago in South Sudan, this discussion started long ago. And, uh, uh, Gabby with the support, with support from Ministry of Health, were able to conduct Gavi, with the support from Minister of Health, were able to conduct a kind of a quick assessment affected by zero dose and under-immunized communities towards in South Sudan, 2013 and 2016. And a lot of distractions and migration of health workers and disruption of social network happened. And this is where a lot of children were being found. A total of eighteen, I mean, a total of
Yeah, I'm very sorry. I'm not able to hear you reliably. I don't know if it's just me. Ian and François, let me know. But at least I'm not able to.
Can't hear you well. I heard few things, but can't hear well.
So Martin, that happens. I'm sorry. It sounded like a fascinating story already. I suggest again that you type, you can share some summary in the chat now. And of course, tomorrow morning, you'll be receiving the questionnaire. So we can go to Ibrahim Abdullahi. Okay, who is no longer in the room. So let's go to Daniel Quazy, who is in the room twice. So let me unmute both of you. I'm guessing you're connecting to two devices.
Thank you very much. I think I needed to join with two devices. So that I can.
We're hearing an echo, so please cut the microphone on the device that you're not using.
Yes, I'm just.
We still have the echo, but I'm sure we'll get there.
All right. I think it's better now.
Yes. All right. Don't forget to introduce yourself. You've joined many experience sharing sessions. So François knows you quite well, but please go ahead.
Because of network, I just have to make sure that I secure my connection with two devices. So that is why I just, I am from Daniel Quazy Kwam, a pharmacist from Ghana with nineteen years of experience. And also a clinical pharmacist specialist. What I am sharing is basically what I've realized in two districts that I worked. One district I worked for about two years and the other district about thirteen good years. And the under-immunized populations that I saw were the hard-to-reach communities. Such as places that during rainy season, there is no accessibility to these communities. And two, there are places before you go, you need to cross rivers and lakes before you can get to them. And also the activities I undertook to understand the low levels where, as a result of our campaigns, during our campaigns and also a home visit by community health officers and as well as community-based agents or community-based volunteers who are not actually health workers, but they are in the community. And we involve them in Ghana. One of the key things we have used in the northern part of the country is to involve the communities to help us with activities, health activities. So community-based volunteers and community-based agents have helped us in that regard to be able to help us in home visit as well as the community health officers who are also doing home visits. So these are the strategies that made us to an activity that made us to understand the low levels of immunization. And what guidance or resource have we used to identify this step? What we, the the guidance, we use the immunization table, immunization registers and community registers. Community registers are done by the community-based volunteers or the agent. So we have taught them how to register every baby that is born within the community. So that is one of the guidance we use to identify. And also with the immunization monitoring charts. And we also use the target that we set for each facility. We use the target. So as we monitor the target, we know there are gaps that we need to what? To be able to reach. And also we have done root cause analysis. And the activities we have undertaken to reach them, these under-immunized populations include, one, ensuring that we intensify campaigns during the dry seasons. So if there's immunization campaigns during the dry seasons because of these hard-to-reach areas that are cut off during rainy season, we have to intensify campaigns during the dry season for these areas. And also the areas that we have to use, we have rivers and we need to cross. The communities themselves have been able to have canoes that help us to cross, to reach the communities where we couldn't have been able to go. And I personally have been part of it because in the district, I I am the district from a COVID violence coordinator those times. So I was involved in monitoring adverse reactions and adverse events following immunizations. And I also facilitate doing their training as a facilitator. So I was involved. So I've even sat in one of those canoes to be able to get to those hard-to-reach communities. So it was a personal experience. And also what we have also done is to use the community health-based planning services. In Ghana, apart from our tertiary teaching hospitals and other specialist hospitals, we have the regional hospitals, district hospitals, polyclinics, health centers. And under the health centers, we have developed what we call community health-based planning services. These are community clinics within the community themselves. We have what we call the static ones and we have the mobile one. So with this tactic and the mobile ones, we are able, we have offices like midwives, full technician, disease control officers, community health nurses who are working there and general nurses who are working there. So they are within the community. So they are close to the people. So it's one of the strategies. And where we don't have the structure, we do mobile chiefs. So the CHO, community health officer moves every day to offer the services to the communities in their various homes. So we are close to them. So these are some of the strategies we have used. And also there's another strategy that we use that is intensifying home visit. Intensifying home visit because the community-based agent and the volunteers are community members. And they know the people themselves. If they visit them most often, so if there is any issue, they quickly liaise with the community health officers. They report, they give us the feedback so that the community health officers could get in touch with them. And also finally, we use what we call the mass campaigns. The mass campaigns, we weren't doing that time. It is very vigorous. So we have that increased coverage. And there's also one thing that we have used that has worked very well, what we call integration of activities. We use integrated activities. So when we are even going for monitoring as district supervision and monitoring, we carry almost everything. So we are going for malaria monitoring. We have the public health nurse with us, a disease control, a community health nurse with us, we carry some buses. So as we go and do the monitoring and we are able to, and the supervision, we identify any child who has not been able to what? Immunize. Then we then give the immunization. So that is the integrated. So we don't just go for malaria, supervision and monitoring or TB. No, when we are going, it's an integrated activity. And we have also used our existing media, especially our radio, community vans and community members to do more announcement for us on almost weekly basis and daily basis to ensure that every child who has not been immunized is identified and brought to the chief's compound or the community-based agent is made to know. So he links up with the CHOs. And also with the the additional resources for these activities. Do you need additional resources for these activities? Yes, we have, we needed additional resources. So we fell on the district assemblies and the special district assemblies and the members of parliament within that district. And they have been so helpful in supporting immunization activities. And the impact currently, I'm not in that district again, two districts again. I'm now in the regional, regional level, working at the regional hospital. So I don't have, the impact as I was there for the past almost about fifteen years that in those two districts, I realized improvement. And because of that, some people walk themselves, mothers walk themselves, that, oh, my child, we gave birth in the southern part of the country or even in the inland. But we have come and want to come and do the immunization because the CBA or the community-based volunteer directed ACI. So there have been a massive improvement in terms of impact. And how to measure is based on the target. The target we have seen increase, which I said that I don't have the data here. So I can't, I'm out of the district, so I can't get those details. But as I was there, I saw it. And the main obstacles that we saw during those processes is that there is always a mass rush for school to upgrade. Those who have been training this, they want to go to school and it is part of our system. Every three or four years, people have the opportunity to go to school. So by the time you realize those who are discouraged and expertise, they are moving out to go for schools and also others going on transfers outside the district. Who is also another destiny, another another challenge, a barrier we have seen. And also the enablers, one thing is that the enablers that have been put in place that is helping is one, the community-based volunteers and the agent. Because we recognize them, that alone is a motivation to them. They are not health workers, but they are community members, we have trained them. So they are willing to do more. Even when you have not told them anything, everybody is like a challenge. Everybody is competing. So they work more. So that alone is, the recognition is a enabler. And also another enabler is that any campaign and any project that we are doing that requires volunteers, we use those existing community-based volunteers. So that alone is also something that makes them to work. Because only program that will come that we need, we don't pick different people, but the only the existing ones, we just train them, then they are able to work. And also the chiefs and opinion leaders of the communities are also enablers because they are part of the process as stakeholders. So they ensure that doing their best and everything, some of them even come and they give talks and that has been encouraging. And also we have community committees. We have district committees, that is the health committee. So we have community health committees, district health committees. So these committee members are from the community. So it has also become enabler to help the process. And also how sustainable it is, it has become part of the routine services.
So I have to interrupt you. It is a fascinating story, however, we still have other speakers as we asked you to. So yeah, I would like to ask you to conclude. I, you know, we're trying to strike the balance. It used to be we would set a time and actually cut off your microphone if you went over time. You know, so this is not to discourage you from sharing the full story when you answer the questionnaire. I, yeah, I think it is important for you to get some feedback in the form of either a short comment or a one or two specific questions from François and Ian Jones before we hear them from Gift Aniam. And thank you, Daniel. So please conclude your thought. I don't mean to cut you off, but there are other people in the room and we're already over time.
Oh, I really understand. So thank you.
All right, appreciate it. So, yeah.
Just one comment, but of course, from Daniel has left his districts. But I was interested, you know, I think he showed a dream infrastructure in terms of health facility or health units that can offer services and especially put a finger on the community-based volunteer. That is a big trend now to reestablish the community system. But he has optimized at maximum this infrastructure. My question, if you remember, was linked to what proportion of hard-to-reach villages? Did they have this infrastructure before or were they created while he was in charge? Were they hardly reached? I mean, there was the big accessibility issue that explained the proportion of the zero dose. But then he has managed to link with the demand. But what proportion of those hard-to-reach existed containing obviously a lot of zero dose in the district when he started?
So we're not going to answer that now. We're going to go to, but Daniel Quazy, please do answer in the chat. And a quick question or comment from Ian Jones and then we'll go to Gift Aniam, our next speaker, because Kuotong Rogers had actually, has actually sent us detailed written answers. Charlotte highlighted that and is traveling. So Ian, a quick comment from you and then we'll go to Gift.
Thank you very much. Again, another fascinating story. And from my point of view, I think the the level of involvement you've got from the community and support you've got for the community and what appears to be a genuine partnership is extremely striking. And it'd be interesting to hear you reflect on why you think the community is so supportive and and so apparently so willing to take, to be part of the part of the solution. And what lessons you think this might hold for other settings? It'd be very interesting to hear your thoughts on how to make that community involvement successful, given you seem to have achieved, as François said, a sort of genuinely successful model there. So very interested to hear your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian Jones. Let's go to Gift now. And for Daniel, please, if you have time, please feel free to answer in the chat. Just to say what I've written in the chat is that we appreciate the fact that you're taking time from work to share experience on zero dose. And we hope that a session like this is helpful to you and the global community as we learn together. And we'll keep going until we've heard from all of the speakers who had their hands raised. Of course, if you need to get back to your work, please do so. Gift, a warm welcome to you. Please keep in mind, we have several more colleagues speaking, concision and the most important, interesting aspects of your zero dose story and the specifics of the story.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Hope you can hear me.
Yes, loud and clear for now.
Okay. So it's been a wonderful time hearing from others. And in terms of their experience of zero dose. So my name is Gift Aniam from Nigeria. I am a consultant with WHO. So for measles and yellow fever, for SIA's activities. So the last time I worked is in Abia State as the consultant, as a measles and yellow fever consultant for the yellow fever and the measles campaign. One of the strategies we used was the zero dose operational strategy during the integrated campaign in Abia State. By last year, thirteen states did some integrated campaign and Abia State was one. Abia State also was chosen as a zero dose state because of some reasons. And some of the reasons were gotten from the measles surveillance data, the post-campaign survey, the R I datas. So only one LGA was chosen, that's Umar Haanot, LGA that was chosen to carry out this operational strategies, this zero dose operational strategy. What was the reason why they chose them? What was the reason why they chose them? Uh because the L G A had was a uh the the settlement that was chosen out of um twenty-one settlement in the L G A, they had, they were hard to reach. And some of the reasons, some refused to access the P A Cs around them. Maybe because they said the P A C was not owned by them, it's a different community that had that that they build the P A C for, so they were not going to access that place. They want their own P A C, some say health facility too far away. And different reasons, some said the part, the 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 health facility was inaccessible. Because when uh we wanted to carry out the campaign, we went to do an assessment of those areas. And we find, and we tried to ask the health workers and some of the committee members why they weren't accessing those, the facility and why they weren't bringing their children for immunization. So these were the reasons they gave to us. Some say, some were not even willing to access the facility, as I've said before, because they said the facility wasn't there. It was, they didn't take ownership of the facility. Instead, some said no attention was given to healthcare in the community. So they paid more attention to uh different things to COVID nineteen. Some some say, ah, we don't want to come to the facility because when we come there, we will be giving COVID nineteen. So different reasons that they brought out. So um some of the activities we said we did to to see how the uh the zero dose children would be immunized during the during the S I A activities, we engaged more teams to see that they they were able to focus just only on zero dose uh settlements. More things we engaged for during the the S I A activities. Then we also, in fact, we those teams focused mostly on the S I, the zero dose population. And we found out that they were able to reach some students, some children that have never received immunization before, despite the health facility was closer to them. Some of the reasons they also gave us then was that um they they don't, they don't want to attempt, they don't have transport to come to the health facility to attempt this uh protect this immunization that we're giving to them. So I'm trying to follow the question. So um we did engage with community leaders and to ask why this, they had the hard health facility, they had buses, so why were their children not immunized? So we engaged with mothers, most especially, and the women leader in the community. We had to do a focus group uh discussion to find out reasons why they weren't bringing out their children for immunization. And we also discovered that they had planned sections for outreaches in the health facility, but this plan sections too were not supported. So it also made the health workers not to even show willingness to go into the community to immunize these children. Even when uh we had the community workers working with the health facility to to tell them or inform them of children of pregnant mothers that just gave birth, the mothers still wouldn't come. So some of the um, some of the reasons why this happened was because they did not take ownership of the health um facilities in their attachment area. Now, health workers also uh use defaulters trackers to as an instrument to track the mothers, especially those ones that were registered in the facility, to track the mothers. And we discovered that even when they are registered during anti-nepal, but when they give birth, they give birth in the uh uh traditional, they give birth with traditional bed attendants. So making the immunization services um unproductive per se. So but uh one of the things we we discussed during the focal group discussion, we discussed that the mothers, even though they decide for one reason or the other to go and give birth in the traditional bed attendance, they should still carry these children to be immunized in the health facility. We also encourage the traditional bed attendants. Once you deliver any woman or any baby, ensure that you take the child immediately to go and receive this CD and other passes that are due to that child. So that is, uh we 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 saw that after the campaign, we were able to reach out to mothers uh and to to children that were zero dose. And we had like five percent of the targeted, like five percent of the targeted population was reached out to during the campaign. So use the use of the S I A is another strategies to reach out to zero dose children. Because we found out that uh activities that are supposed to support the routine immunization to reach out to uh to zero dose children, some of them weren't supported. And that was the big challenge for us. So we now decide to use the S I A to see how we can track this uh children, this zero dose children. So and another recommendation I give because um even though from the national, they gave us like a thirteen settlement. But when we finished our assessment, we had like twenty-one settlement. So there are more population, there are more communities that are zero dose that were reached out to during the S I A. And we're trying to seek even from more funds to see that we extend this strategy to order uh to other L G As around the zero dose L G A, so as to be able to reach out to all these zero dose children that know zero dose that should be missed, especially during S I A. In fact, it should be, it should be targeted for, not that it should just be a general campaign, but a targeted uh campaign for zero dose children. So that is um, and then another uh recommendation we also gave was the
Gift, I suggest, I'm going to, sorry, but I'm I'm going to ask you to give, share the recommendations in the chat as we'll be saving the chat log because we do have two final speakers. I'm also going to suggest to, I think this is absolutely fascinating. I wish we could spend the afternoon doing this, but I know that many of you have already had to go back to your daily duties. We appreciate the extra time. We'll share the recording of the individual stories and of course, there'll be the follow-up afterwards uh with the questionnaire where you can share all of your recommendations in addition to doing it uh here right now. Then what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Ian and François um just at the end, once we've heard Hawa Bouhari and Sunil Raja uh to share the the questions and comments that you have for each of these uh of our final speakers. Uh and I'm going to ask Hawa Bouhari, it is a bit unfair because some uh speakers who started, uh we were less conscious of the time, but I do want to give you the um uh the floor. Hawa, uh please uh introduce yourself, remind us uh who you are and what you do. And then if you could share a summary of the key points, what you feel is important to share with the group to give us a sense of your zero dose story.
Okay, thank you so much, Reida. Um I'm Hawa Bouhari, I'm a social and behavioral change communication consultant from UNICEF. I work with, I work in Nigeria at the provincial level. So um what we do, we have a lot of zero doses in our communities here, especially in the northern part of Nigeria. Hello. Hello?
Yes, we're listening. I think it's somebody who still had their.
So we have a lot of, we have a lot of zero doses, we noticed in our communities. What we did is that we engaged local community mobilizers so that they can help us track the zero doses. Initially, they started with a polio campaign, but over time, they got to they got to add up with routine immunization services and A N T. So practically, what they do is that they go house to house, track the pregnant women from from pregnancy to delivery, refer back to facilities and track for routine immunization. In the course of this um um exercise, we got to realize some of the root causes for this zero doses we have. One of them is that when the locals give birth at home, they don't actually go out based on tradition, um local traditions for like the first six weeks. So in that first six weeks, they don't get to access facilities for the for their newborn, which we tried to rectify. Then we have a lot of gender-related barriers that prevents women from accessing facilities and services for their children. So for us, I I I hope to give a detailed explanation for for my, for my zero dose exercise with the questionnaire, considering the timeframe and all that. But for us, this strategy is really helpful. Then going forward, what we do is that this, it has, it has actually been going on for a couple of years. So now, for sustainability purposes, the government is trying to adopt a situation whereby they get a lot of other community mobilization um um volunteers at local level to scale up on a larger scale so that they can cover the whole province. And hope this will take up and reduce the level of zero doses we have in our community. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much indeed. Um so we have our final speaker and thank you for your patience for those of you who may have put your hand up very early and who've been waiting all this time. Uh truly grateful, I think this is a, yeah, this gives us an indication of sort of firsthand feel for the challenges you're facing and how you are going about addressing them. Uh Sunil Raja, uh you will be our final speaker and I see a few more hands raised. I apologize, uh I I think we are, and I really appreciate uh all of you as well as Ian Jones and François Gas for for staying this long so we can hear firsthand the voices uh uh to go with the with the stories. Uh so, uh Sunil, uh the floor is yours.
Yeah, uh good, uh good afternoon, everybody. I am Sunil from Pakistan and go more specifically, I belong to one of the provinces, like state of Pakistan, so I specifically focus and discuss that particular province in. So I am very, very thankful for giving me opportunity, Reida and François Gas and Iain for handing over to me in the floor. Yes, of course, zero dose is now, I think it's become the global uh discussion and it's a hard discussion. Likewise, the same issues that almost the most of participant has discussed is here in Sindh as well. But I'll go uh for the uh more on the strategies and the actions that we are taking. So here we have established a very good uh P I and E P A synergy. Because to cover zero dose is the more specific in uh other than the routine work of the E P I. Like in routine, we have fix site and outreach, but when we talk about the zero dose, it's more specific to the particular uh family or a household. So that needs some more strategic focus. Now, what we are doing in the P I and E P A synergy, uh why came the uh starting from the very lower tier of the health system is the union council. So at all union councils and the district, then the district, the P I and E P A staff have uh used to conduct the monthly meeting where uh the all issues in the particular month, that how many zero days we have because zero, zero dose number we receive and after every S I A of the polio. So far, the next polio, uh the polio S I A, till that period, we used to uh take very rigorously to uh reach the all zero dose doses. So this is the one strategy that P I E P A synergy uh is very much strengthened and we focus that it should be the more and like they have very frequent, the polio team regards zero dose and it gives to the E P A staff. So there should be the more coordination that we are focusing and it's being in practice. Other, other than that, we have the special outreach activities. Uh like, once we receive the data, uh we see that where are the major clusters of zero dose. Because if I talk in the journal, that there are the outreach activities. But for the zero dose, we look at very critically, very detail and very in-depth that where are the clusters? For that, we start the special outreach activities focusing that we need, we identify the social mobilizers and the vaccinators and we give the top up, the little incentive to them and we make the appropriate microplan, identify the areas and uh like how to aware the community that we are coming, that we identify the major resources of the community, the community gatekeepers, the masks, and we have already given the megaphone announcements. So at one hand, the communication activity started a day before or a week before. And then the outreach go and establish their kit station or the outreach sites. So this is another area that we are looking at, the special outreach activities. And third is the mobile vans. We have now started the mobile vans because if I talk not in the general, but in the very specific, that we have the two, three major urban slums and the mega cities like the Karachi and Hyderabad, you might have heard. These, the Karachi is the one of the uh urban slum, is worldwide famous and it is comes into the top ten major cities of the world. So uh we started the mobile vans. Now, mobile van is a very strategically used to those particular areas where we have zero dose and the defaulters. So what they do, because we receive the vaccines in the multi-dose vial, the B C G vaccine is I am talking about and even the measles. So uh to uh to uh ensure that there is the standard wastage of the vaccine, like fifty percent is allowed in our province and country. So looking at the very strategic to the uh uh the efficient use of the vaccine, that the mobile vans definitely we move and we have the microplan to those particular areas where he, we have the clusters of the zero doses. Now, the fourth initiative, that is the evening shifts in the mega hospitals of the big cities in the urban slum like Karachi and Hyderabad. Uh and we have started where deliveries are taking place. And in that, what we do, that we have trained to the all paramedic staff and specifically the lady health visitor, the L H V and the female staff who is uh for the deliveries. So we trained them how to administer the B C G. So this is another initiative that we are looking at, the all resource, uh the potential areas where we can see that we can do a lot. Now, the fourth is, fifth is, we are tracking and the mapping of the clusters through the M I A system. Uh it is only the eight highest union councils. So recently, within partner organizations, we have started that we are going to map each area of that particular cluster through the M I A system. And we see that, okay, how many areas we have and how many teams we can move. So we are also using the technology and data. And the sixth initiative, that is very, I think, very important to everybody who is listening to me is the partner partnering with the partnership with the private sector. Now, uh the government definitely have the largest scale, the health units. But it is not enough for the population and specifically, I am talking about the mega cities. So in the mega cities, we have started partnership with the private sector. The pharmacies and the clinics and the C S O, civil society organization, they are, they are working in the health sector. So almost more than thirty, forty uh private sector that we have engaged, we have trained them and we have started the evening clinics, evening shifts at their pharmacy and clinics for the vaccination. So this is another initiative because the private sector has a good look, the good appearance in terms of the government uh the E P A centers and the health facilities. And the private sector has a good rapport with the community because they receive the very good welcome and they have the good number of staff as well, like in the E P A center, the government, only the vaccinator and sometimes the polio team are the uh the lady health workers, so they are the government. So in the private sector, they have a good number of staff, so I think this is another initiative good. Now, how we are going to break and make a lot of initiatives going, so we have very good data registry system, electronic system. Through that, we are recording each and every child through the data with their uh names and all the details. Like we are giving the specific Q R code to everyone. This is the couple of years ago, we have started the digital registry. Previously, we only record through the digital system is only the numbers, but now, right now, we have the names. So we have full details of the parents, the addresses and their contact numbers. So uh we are identifying zero dose and the default list through that particular digital registry and we share with the uh vaccinator, the local teams. And again, we look through that digital registry that how many of the identified zero dose are covered. So that to uh get the more accurate results and the more robust result is again with the registry that we cross made with the each of the child with the names. And the monthly meetings and our other initiatives are really going on. So these are the couple of activities that we are very critically looking at. And the monthly meetings and our other initiatives are really going on, so these are the couple of activities that we are very critically looking at in our province. Now, I uh again, I'll I'll really appreciate the point identified and suggested by the Francois. That we can register the pregnant woman and get her uh. Once she is registered and in the system, then of course there would be the better anti-natal care system. And we can also give them the tetanus vaccination and uh through our linkages or maybe through our the. Email vaccinators as the our health facility systems. If we able to do this uh registering the pregnant woman, definitely we can also convince her to further move on the. Uh birth dose uh and the child vaccination. So I think these are the couple of things that I wanted to share with all of you and thank you so much and I am the last speaker, so I will not go to take more time. Of course, it's already taken more time, so once again, thank you uh everybody.
Thank you, Sunil Raja. Alright, so we um are almost uh one hour and a half over the time initially allotted to this session. But I I believe it's, I hope it's well worth it for those of you, given how many are still in the room. It seems like uh many of you have uh uh have have made the same, are thinking the same thing I am. Now, um to close, uh you've heard uh the last three speakers, Gift Aniam, Hawa Buhari and Sunil Raja. So I'd like to ask Ian Jones uh and then Francois Gas for, let's say, your closing comments, questions. That each of these three speakers can then uh can then reflect on and follow up, make sure that they address when they. Uh answer the questionnaire, where everybody will get a chance to really tell their story. Uh Ian?
Thank you, Reda. I I think maybe in the interest of time, I'll just make some general, general, general comments. And I I think um it's been an extremely interesting set set of contributions. Um and and one can see a number of um themes uh that that have that have that have come out. Um particularly the 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 importance of uh looking at this at a very local, a local level. And um uh you know, having having planning really down at the lowest level possible. Uh and uh you know, down down to the facility level and having good microplans at that level. Um obviously, the importance, fundamental importance of bringing communities into these conversations, into the planning and into the delivery. Um is is clearly of of fundamental and uh importance and great to see some real, real partnerships being uh being established. Um I think the uh, you know, we've heard about importance of data uh and being able to um track. Uh being able to monitor, being able to evaluate activities, being being incredibly important. That um health, health workers and health facilities need need to take responsibility and have accountability for reaching the communities. And uh the managers higher up in the system need need to sort of empower them, but also mon- and monitor. Uh that the 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 activities, you know, I think the um take home messages I'm I'm getting is is is. You know, it it is possible to to crack this very difficult challenge. And um I I think there's been some inspirational stories which I hope we can capture. Through the um, through the survey, uh and we can learn some of those lessons and and share them uh more widely. So a very impressive set of presentations and I, you know, I'm really. Um in in awe of some of the work that's being uh being carried out, so again, thank you very much for. Um spending the time to share your your thoughts, it's very, very much appreciated. I'll 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 hand over to Francois for some comments now.
Thank you, Ian, and thank you particularly to, you know, hearing your stories, which are not known, huh? Neither by me, neither by a large group of people, and they need to be here because you are all doing something about the zero dose. And you you went through a process which is really a process that should lead to some results. And I think you've all highlighted the fact that the first step is to know where they are, those zero dose, do they cluster? And maybe validate, some people went to validate the zero dose and took that opportunity to understand the cause of the zero dose. I have learned a lot of the use of S I As, the campaign mode to identify. House by house, sometimes the zero dose or the under immunized. You know, I'm not sure how many years we continue S I As, but let's not miss that opportunity to 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 join the zero dose. I think I've learned that zero dose have an access issue. So we sometime overlook those access issues, particularly when we have high coverage, because what we have heard is that. There was already an impressive routine coverage in most of the countries that presented. It was very high coverage, so your, the target of zero dose is quite a tiny proportion. And you need data and you need to assess the cause to do better. But accessibility become a critical issue and accessibility, we heard many times the outreach. But outreach will work only if there is a demand and people come to get immunized. And we have heard a a number of experience on high, how you you get into. Uh those population to really attend, we have heard about to increase demand. We have heard about integrated services because those are abandoned communities of families, very poor. Where the priority may not be immunization, but if we don't address their health priorities. Uh how do you put together integration and we need more experience on integration of the public health services for those community. We have heard also an important from Ghana and others, uh community volunteers. I think it's a growing movement now to have community health workers, the primary scare from Al Maata many, many years ago is coming back on the table. And I think many countries are bringing in now uh primary healthcare worker in communities that may help a lot. We have heard the role of the private sector, I suppose it's even more important in big town like Karachi, twenty eight million. Peoples like many countries' size, where they play a bigger role, but don't underestimate the role of private sector. Not very well known even in rural areas and they may be here, a big, big opportunity to do better with the zero dose. Knowing that zero dose are sometimes very poor people who may not go very often to private sector. And I would, I think I was being impressed by, uh I don't remember who was the name. Uh about digging in the root cause, interviewing communities, women to understand really the real cause of the problem. With the own, we have the word ownership of the health facility, those are very important root cause, if this is not solved. Maybe the race doesn't work, so for it's, it looks like very important, I was very impressed by the digging in root cause. In in communities, visiting mothers of zero dose, understanding the the true why. And we have heard some nice story like identifying like was rehearsed by Sunil. And and done in practice that is a pregnant mother who is pregnant for nine months, not the best contact to follow up. Then the the child that would be immunized later. Thank you very much for all those impressive experience shared that I hope many more will learn from. And your your response to the questionnaire with the important, the priority details will be very important for all of us. Thank you and over to you, Reda.
Thank you very much indeed, Francois Gas and Ian Jones. Uh and you know, um the the scholar community, now the the movement for I A twenty thirty community. I think this is one of the times that I feel, I can feel how amazing it is to have these stories shared in this way. Um so I'm truly appreciative of the time you took to respond, we did not expect, I did not expect this many people to join the uh. The session and did not expect to hear so many specific detailed stories. Uh so that's above and beyond um at least my expectations and just um really appreciate. Um the everyone's contribution, the next step before, of course, is the questionnaire. Uh and again, we're inviting you not as a data source or a subject of research, but as really co-authors and co-contributors. To a process that we hope will contribute both, that will help you and help global partners better support you. Just to be very clear on the purpose and the approach we're taking, so we look forward to uh the the next steps. Uh that will be led by Ian Jones with support, of course, from the rest of the T G L F team. Once again, thank you and take care. And again, we have no assemblies for the coming two weeks, we'll be reconvening on the second of May to celebrate. Uh World Immunization Week, you're about to receive an email message specifically, the invitation specifically about that, don't miss that one. Second of May will be the time when we reconvene, uh the entire global community will be together. To really celebrate the first few weeks of this movement and to look forward to the next stage where we'll be moving from situation analysis. Through action planning into actually implementing projects and supporting to supporting each other in doing so. Once again, thank you and goodbye.